Don't mess it up.
All right. The State Board of Education meeting of December 12, 2017 is called to order. Okay. I've had a request for a point of personal privilege. Lupe, please.
Okay, thank you, Richard. I would like to formally introduce to you Dr. Alicia Fly. She is the new Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Chief Academic Officer Consultant Services for Bakom Intermediate School District. Those of you that remember Judy, that used to sit there.
Yes.
Okay, this is the new Judy. So I'd like to introduce you to Dr. Fly.
Yes, welcome.
Welcome. Right. I understand there are individuals who wish to address the board at today's meeting in public participation, and Marilyn, you have that.
I do. I have two forms. The first speaker is Linda Brundage, and the second one is Kim Jones. So Linda, if you will come to the table, I will remind you, we have five minutes, you can monitor it here. The board does not engage in conversation, but they're happy to hear whatever you've come to tell them.
Well, thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you. As the Executive Director from the Michigan Coalition to Prevent Gun Violence, I want to reiterate part of what I said last month. We continue to be very opposed to concealed carry in our schools. As you're aware, 584 went through the Senate rather quickly, a month or so ago, and it is now waiting to be taken up by the House. It is our position that the only weapons that ought to be in public schools should be carried by trained law enforcement, period. That, you know, some people talk about this 584 as doing away with open carry, and so we don't have to have lockdowns, and police won't be called, and we won't lose instructional time, all of those reasons. It is our position that concealed carry is not an answer to that. We could, and it would be a good thing, to stop open carry in our schools, but to substitute concealed carry for that is really a non-answer. It's a very potentially dangerous answer. We know, and research supports, that the more weapons there are in a situation, the more likely there are to be gun deaths. States with readily concealed, ready concealed carry laws have a much higher incidence of violent crimes than states that don't have these laws. So I'd like you to think about the eighth grader that's sort of out of sorts, and his girlfriend breaks up with him, and he knows the history teacher has a gun. I mean, how easy would it be for that kid to get the gun? I suggest to you, very easy. If the elementary teacher has a gun, and it's in her purse, that's not going to do any good. If it's in her desk, that's not going to do any good either. So, I mean, it's just sort of a chaotic thing. And sometimes, in opposition to this type of legislation, people will bring up the Second Amendment. There is no question that Michigan is a hunting state, and has that history of gun usage in our country, in our state, and that more and more people are buying weapons for protection. However, often, people talk about Scalia and the District of Columbia versus Heller, that was the important ruling that he made, and the court at that time confirmed the right of individuals to possess firearms for traditional lawful purposes, such as self-defense within the home and for honey. The opinion also held that the Second Amendment rights are not unlimited. Scalia went out of his way to declare longstanding laws designed to protect the public are valid and enforceable. In other words, the Second Amendment is not absolute, and I think, you know, applying it in this situation is a misstatement. In 2015, a survey was done by Epic MRA, and at that time, and since then, I have talked to Bernie Corn at Epic, and he says these survey research points still hold. So in 2015, 57% of residents with a concealed license said that we should not be able to carry a concealed pistol into currently gun-free zones. So that was a survey of people who have concealed weapon permit. And 61% that they agree with the statement that the only guns that should be allowed in these facilities are those carried by law enforcement. I would also like to bring to your attention that all various groups participate in our educational system, from the administrators groups, to school board groups, MEA, AFT, all of those groups that we depend on for our first-class public schools agree that there should not be concealed weapons in schools. And I would like for this board to take leadership and agree with that position of the various educational groups. So, thank you for your time.
Our final speaker is Kim Jones.
Hello. Hi, I'm Kim Jones, I'm from Papa. Once again, I find myself here in Lansing, in front of you, the State School Board, to defend our rights to keep our Redskins logo and imagery. Not only to defend our rights, but to defend the reputation of our community, a community that is caring and respectful and full of Redskins pride and history. We are the Papa Redskins. First, I would like to touch base on a photograph that was presented to you at the last school board meeting, a photo of a young Papa Redskins student, not one of a mascot, because in Papa, we do not have a mascot. We have an icon, an image, a logo, one we are very proud of. I would like you to know a little about this student. First off, he and his family have spoken out many times on the positive input that this logo has had in their lives, and this has come with a great cost to them. Number two, he constructed this headdress on his own, with some help from his family and their knowledge and traditions. Number three, no one asked him or knew he was going to display it at our homecoming ceremony, we were all surprised. Number four, he is very proud to be a Papa Redskin, has been very vocal about it. And number five, and I think is the most important, he is Native American, and he is a Papa Redskins. The "Not Your Mascot" group came to our festival, a grape and wine festival, that is held in our downtown area, to protest the logo. Thousands of people were in attendance, not only Papa residents, but visitors from various communities. We were called white supremacists, racist, and murderers, all to our faces. Many people were upset, most of them were not community members, because we in Papa are kind of used to it, we just kind of try and ignore it. Papa residents have become immune to being called all those names, because we know the truth, but we are tired of being bullied and harassed and called names. We were instructed to deal with the Redskins logo on a local level, and we have. Our school board has voted on it, and we are the Papa Redskins, but this has not stopped them, or the harassment, or the vandalism. Recently, in Kamazoo, the pioneer statue was vandalized due to the fact that the Gunlight Casino Tribe spoke out in favor of keeping it and educating everyone on its true meaning and Native American culture. The Chair of the Gunlight Casino has said, "We might not like history, but we cannot change it by tearing down the statues. We need education, not eradication." That is the answer. So the statue was vandalized, same as was my house last year, when we spoke out against changing the logo. Coincidence, I think not, but the harassment needs to stop. In Papa, we are trying to implement Native American education, and we are in touch with a lot of the other tribes that are in favor of us keeping it. We just kind of wanted to let you know that we don't have a mascot. That young man came on his own, and his family has been very vocal about supporting us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, that concludes our participation.
Our next item of business is approval of minutes of the regular committee, and regular committee of the whole meeting of November 14, 2017. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a motion? Is there a motion and support? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. It passes. If Vanessa and Dr. But Doc.
Kyle will fill in now.
Oh, Kyle is filling in for her? Very good.
I'll be your bodyguard.
Very good. To have the report on partnership districts, I think we're ready to hear that.
Are there handouts?
I think Bert has them.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, Paula.
I'm back to just kind of give you an update. I had an opportunity to share with you last month, and so I want to kind of let you know where we've been able to come since we were last together. And I'm just going to kind of go over some of the general updates that we've got going on, where we are with the new development, and I want to make sure that I let you know, the last time I was here, that week we were going to be having our second networking session. So I want to kind of let you know about that and bring you up to speed on some things. We are currently, we have completed our initial phone calls, and that's a part of the process that we go through in setting up times to come together with the new districts, so that they can get an overview of what the process is. And one of the next steps is for them to have an initial meeting where we come together. This meeting is led by the district. They, and what you have included, where you can see, is some of the agenda items that are often on those, that take place during those meetings. Generally, the district, and it's, because all of these are district-led, they're not always identical, it depends on what they want to bring to the table, but they usually provide an overview of the district, some background, and talk about those kinds of things that would help us have a better understanding, you know, of what's going on in the district. They also do data sharing, and that data can, it includes assessment data, it includes attendance data, behavior data, all kinds, whatever they want to bring to the table and share out at that time, that's what they do. Sometimes, they have some of their partners that they're currently working with, and they'll come and talk about some of the supports that they're providing. So depending on what's going on in the district, that's what is coming out at this initial meeting. Two of the key things also that are there, though, they talk to us about successes that they've had, and how have those successes impacted their student achievement. But then, this is also a time when they talk about some of their challenges, you know, what are some of the problems based upon the comprehensive needs assessments that they've done, and things like that, feedback that they've gotten from their community, from their staff, from their students. So they have an opportunity to, you know, share that information also. And then, we have question and answer time. And the teams who are present from, you know, from our end, it's been Superintendent Wiston or Deputy Superintendent Kiesler, I've been at most of them, and then the liaisons that are assigned to the districts were all there. So now, with the exception of two districts, we've had all of the initial meetings, one is scheduled for this Friday, and then the final one is scheduled for Monday. So everyone will be in the throes of starting to get going on the actual development of the partnership agreement. Those agreements are due to be submitted back into us the last month, or the last week in January. Now, yes.
Would you, some of the districts have like 20 schools, and others have maybe one, is there, just comment on the difference in scale, and how that affects your work, if at all?
The district that has the greatest number is Detroit. With the other districts there, they have no more than generally three, that's the largest one. And for the work that we've been doing with Detroit, you know, in that first round, they had 20-plus schools. So they've added on, you know, another 20, and we have the liaison that who's assigned to them, that's their only assignment.
Okay.
So where the other liaisons have two or three districts, well, she has one additional, but it's the charter school that is authorized through Detroit.
Yes.
So it's still, you know, working with Detroit. We deploy a team to go work with her, you know, I've been with her on some of those meetings, and they've kind of got a process, and we've been really working closely with Mrs. Wright and Dr. Viti on going through it. He's been very hands-on in, you know, what's going on in the agreements. And when we were there, I think we were in Detroit last week, they have their strategic plan, and they've really developed, you know, under his leadership, a really focused plan. So one of the things that we're even looking at is for them to be able to take their original agreement and modify it to kind of really support what they've set in their strategic plan. And as a matter of fact, the liaison is there with them today. So she's kind of right, you know, boots on the ground with them all of the time, kind of to help them through. So that's one of the ways that we're addressing that. And then, she calls out for anybody else that she needs to come to provide some support for. So that's how we're working through that one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Now, when we actually get down to the writing of the agreements, we have some recommended attendees at the table. Some are required, but some we strongly recommend. And that's what you see here, the district leadership, and when we talk about that, we not only mean like the principals and central office, but also the school board, so, and teacher leaders, any of the leadership that's there. Then other district staff, you know, union representation. Sometimes, it's the union president, sometimes it's an identified person, you know, who will be the one, but who will be that voice. For those public school academies, we have authorizers who are a part of that development. The ISDs and RISAs, then external partners, you know, as I've shared, many of them have external partners that they've been working with, and we bring them to the table also. But also parents and community members. Now, what's not up here, that, you know, we also recommend, especially in high schools, but it's students, you know, get that student voice as a part of it also. So, you know, it's one of those questions where, well, what are we going to do to help the students? Well, have you asked them? So, you know, that's another voice that comes in, yes.
Could you give me one or two examples of external partners, just so I get a feel for what you're?
Boys and Girls Club.
So other community groups that may?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Might be, you know, Education Association.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Any questions on that process? You know, like I said, we're in the midst of it right now, so we're real excited. And one of the things is, we are really excited, because the districts are seeming excited. So that generates excitement on our side. And it kind of started to come out, not only at some of the meetings that we've been having with them, but during our second networking session, which, again, I talked about a little bit, you know, the last time I was here, all of the original districts were present, they were all able to be there. And four of the seven newly identified districts were able to be there, so we thought that that was really great. One of the things that had come up while we'd been out visiting current districts, as well as talking some to the newly assigned ones, they were having some questions on how, you know, schools were identified, and they weren't exactly clear, so Dr. Kiesler was able to be there and answer the questions, and everyone, and one of the things that was really great, the questions had come up during that week while we were out in the field. So within a week, all of those questions got answered. So it helped, you know, the districts see that we really are trying to be attentive to what their questions and their needs are, yes.
But to that end, I mean, they weren't sure why they got selected necessarily, I mean, is it mainly, when you're going through the process for agreement on the development, is it mainly focused on the statewide assessment?
Yeah, for this, for this round.
So basically, everything is kind of honed in on what is, what's everybody going to do to get the assessment grade, the scores up?
Well, that is a part, you know, we are looking at that, because how they do on the assessment is one of the measures of, you know, how successful we're being in ensuring that our kids are getting educated. But it's not the only thing, for the identification purposes at this point, that was what was used, but as we're going forward, and it shows up in what some of those goals and benchmarks are included in their agreements, that we're looking at more than just, you know, the assessment. And, but, but one of the things that we are trying to make sure that we do is to have them look at, what are those, what are some of those factors? What are some of those things that impact how students are doing in school, and addressing those?
Kind of the high-stakes nature of testing is that, is there a real deep discussion about, okay, if this is what we're going to focus on, what is the negative consequences of, you know, does that mean we get rid of music and art and recess, and, you know, these kids all of a sudden become, you know, I mean, the harm that can be done by focusing strictly on a test?
Well, it depends. But here's, here's one of the things, when you really look at, when you look at brain research, and you talk about, what are the conditions that students need to have in order to learn best? Music is one of those things that they need to have. Physical activity is one of those things that they need to have. So what we're starting to do now is to step back and take a look, and you know, we talk about the whole child, but if you really look at what the brain needs, and this is kids or adults for that matter, in order to really be able to learn how to process things, how to, you know, spark the creative side that leads to, you know, deeper learning, then we don't get, we can't get rid of the music. We can't get rid of the art, because those are some of those pieces that are needed. So what we're looking at in helping districts talk through is how can we, if you don't have it, how can we get it in there? How can partners help leverage, you know, additional resources to help make that happen? So, no, and I'm an old theater person, so I recognize that too, but, you know, so we're, I think we're bringing it back around, though, so that we recognize that all these other pieces are critical, you know, to get at what kids need to learn.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't all of a sudden we got eight hours of test prep.
Nope.
And that's all they start doing, to bring the grades up.
And, you know, and now the research is showing that that doesn't work. So as we're looking at those, you know, evidence-based practices, absolutely. Yes, sir.
So at East Camwood High School, we were not a partnership school, we were called a priority school back then, and as part of our transformation plan, one of the requirements was that we allocate more minutes for core subject areas, math, science, social studies, English. And so we actually made a big, big schedule change from trimesters to semesters, which put a bunch of minutes back into our academic course. The disadvantage of that was that it did take minutes away from electives, which is what I think Tom is referring to. And so I'm wondering, and this was four or five, you know, four or five years ago, so I'm wondering if that's still part of the requirement of these partnership schools, is that they add more minutes to their core subject areas?
No, it's not. And even if you look at ESSA, it talks about, you know, those other areas more than just the core. So, you know, the general move is moving away from that practice.
I have a question, I have a question for Luke. Now, you were required to put more minutes into the content areas, because you were in the priority, a priority school.
Correct.
Now, was the objective met, and then you were able to get out of that category doing what the recommendation was?
Yeah, and realize, there's a lot of moving parts here, there's a lot of variables that have been changed. That was one of the big moves that we made, and our academic achievement increased significantly over the next four years.
Okay, so then, when that happened, did you go back to the old model, or you kept the model that was recommended?
Yeah, so we still have the same model, we're still in the semester model that we changed to. But recognize, that's not the only change that was made, there were a lot of significant changes that happened as part of the transformation plan. But we do have the results, we went from the fourth percentile to the 49th percentile, but it was a number of changes that allowed for that to happen.
And the parents are happy with the increase?
Yeah, yeah. And honestly, the state was very supportive, I mean, they, you know, like a lot of the stuff you talk about, of letting the school district decide what are the leverage points, and what is the things that we need to work on, it was a collaborative process, it wasn't just state telling us, you have to do these things.
And you know?
And so, I may, I mean, yes, the test, the test results might have been achieved, but at what cost? They weren't measuring creativity, that's a hard thing to measure, but if they did, would that have gone down, and would the discussion have been, was it worth it? You know, because we do measure some things that are easy to measure, and we don't, you know, and so the things that are difficult to measure don't get measured, and then if there's a, you know, so we don't know what the downside to policies are necessarily, we just know there's some upside, but we're not sure if that's actually a good thing.
And there's a balance to it, because, you know, we also figured out how to develop some of the programs that work on that creativity in different ways, right, outside of school, built into other structures, so it's not like we just abandoned that. I mean, our school is crazy diverse, and we have a diversity of opportunities for kids, and those still exist, you know, it's not like those went away. So there, obviously, there's a balance, you know, there's a balance to the content versus non-content.
You know, but when you talk about the core, one of the ways that you can get at the core is through the arts. You know, what better way to teach fractions than music and musical notes? So how do you integrate it in together, and ensure that you are calling on multiple ways to provide the information, to ensure that, you know, all students have an opportunity? Sometimes, there's some things that you just need to practice, you know, your multiplication facts, you just got to practice them. But you need to know what's going on, what's the process, what's happening? And so, you know, what we're trying to encourage is, and again, it goes back, whatever is, whatever districts find is working for them that may need fine-tuning, or if they need to just try to really pull back and step outside of the box, we're trying to help give them the kind of support that they need to help ensure that whatever they're putting in place has a high probability of yielding success.
Like my question, and we kind of touched upon this maybe the last time, and to Tom's point, how do you kind of like invigorate, or help to, invigorate innovation, or help districts that struggle with thinking outside of the box? Because it's kind of hard getting out of that mindset of test, test, test.
It is.
As well as take that top-down or bottom, you know, bottom-up. So how do you help them to?
It's just a process, we go, we talk, we, you know, help convene think sessions, you know. One of the things that I think is starting to come out with the districts that we've been working with is they're feeling more comfortable and trying some different things that, you know, we're not just kind of... We go, we talk, we, you know, help convene think sessions, you know. One of the things that I think is starting to come out with the districts that we've been working with is they're, they're feeling more comfortable and trying some different things that, you know, we're not just kind of laying and wait with I gotcha, you know, we're encouraging that. So, they, they are drawing on other members of their teams to try to get ideas, you know, still focusing in on what, what is our goal, where are we trying to go? But how can we get there? So, that's, that's, that's kind of where we are, and, but like I said, right now, it's a process, you know, and it's unlearning...
Yes.
Old ways, so that we can start new things. Yeah. But it's, it's as they develop a comfort level, you know. And, and one of the things that, in having at this last session, and as we've been going around talking to the newly identified, you know, partner districts, one of the things that we're encouraging them to do is call one of the districts who's been there. Call them, talk to them, you know, ask them, is this for real? Or, you know, can we trust it? And so, they have been reaching out. And when we've gone to visit, you know, we'll say, call this district, they've got a, you know, their demographic is similar to yours, or call this district, you know, and, and talk to this superintendent, or call this district, this superintendent had a lot of questions, and see what they, you know, have to say. Because we want them to know. Yes, question?
And as you're answering that question, are you noticing some districts more innovative than others, and then are you kind of like...
Yes, yes, we are.
Kind of like working?
Yes, we are. And with some of those, I, we kind of get the feeling, and not having lived there and worked there, we don't know exactly. But for some of them, some, it almost seems like we had this idea, but we were afraid to do it. But now, I think we can go on and try it. That's with, with some. Others, just kind of hearing what others are doing. And that's one of the things that has been really helpful about the networking sessions, that they're hearing from others. Dr. Martin was able to be with us at this session and, and bring words, so we're looking forward to his, his coming onboard full, full force in February. For this session, what we did, and it was as a result of recommendations from the first session, we had individual sessions where we divided up groups by like responsibilities. So, you know, superintendents were together, other central office staff, building principals, other team members, ISD, as they discussed some of the challenges and some of the successes. And they really seemed to appreciate that because they, they got, they seemed to get different kinds of ideas from others who were in the similar shape that they were in. You know, I've, I've got this building, and I'm trying to do this. So, that, that worked out really well, so we were, we were really pleased with that. And one of the things, and, you know, we were talking this morning about staffing, the thing that rose to the top when we were talking about what the concerns were and what we wanted to address in future sessions, and in other technical assistance, was totally around, you know, recruitment and retention of staff. And even as we have been out during, doing our initial meetings, that has come up. So, there's been like a full-court press where everybody's being mobilized here at the department to come together, to, you know, actually go out to districts with our teams to see, let's, let's talk these things through. For, for the, for the session number three, we've gotten some volunteers from some of the districts to come and sit down and look at what might the day look like in order to really address this need. And in addition to just providing updates, the whole session is going to be focused on, on staffing, the recruitment and the retention and all of those pieces, the whole session. And this has come out of not only the current, you know, districts, but the newly identified districts. So, we were really pleased that we had a couple of them to step up and say they would be a part of the team because we emphatically did not want to add anything else onto their plate, you know, planning. But, you know, they, they said, well, we don't want to plan it, but we want to give you some input in our thinking. So, what we're, what we've identified is a superintendent from the current district, or the, the original districts, and then a superintendent from one of the new districts coming in, so that they can be there to kind of help guide what that, what that agenda is going to look like for that day. So, you know, we're really excited about that. And, you know, like I said, one of the things that came out of a meeting that we held with stakeholders around the state, with partners, they talked about some things to be cautious of. And one of them was to make sure that we put things in place to keep everybody energized, you know. You get that excitement at the beginning, but then, how do you keep the momentum going? So, that's some of the things that we're also working on, you know, with, with the districts, how do we keep the momentum? And that's some of the things that the liaisons are starting, you know, that we're listening out for, are their lags. We had a district that said, okay, I'm not sure if we're, how we're doing now. So, we pulled out their agreement, and we started going through. And they realized they were really doing everything that they were, had said they were going to do. But what had happened, it had become a part of them. So, you know, once it becomes a part of you, it's not new. So, what we told them, we'll just keep, keep honing in, you're, you're making the right steps, you're, you're monitoring it as you go along. But then start to take notes. Are there other things that you see that you may want to polish or address, or put a spike to? But you are on target. So, one of the things that we're trying to help them do is to make sure that they go back and really see the progress that they really are making. And for the most part, everyone really is on target. Right now, we're also in the process, you know, we had talked about the, the funds from, you know, before, and so the, the districts are now starting to take a look at, you know, the kinds of things that they want to include. And so, they will be, being submitted as we go along. Again, we want to just emphasize the fact that the partnership model is based upon these key tenants, the mutual respect. And we are seeing that develop. And one of the things that we are, are really excited about is, as we're bringing on the, the new districts, we're not having to work so hard with the mutual respect because it's kind of gotten out there, that this is the way we're doing business. And it really is the way we're doing business. Mutual agreement, coming together, the different, different partners, different players, coming to, to come together and make sure that we're focused on what it is that will best serve our kids, and that's our common point, and all roads lead to that. Reducing barriers. We had a, one of our districts who was applying for some things, and they hadn't heard yet, and our, our team got in and we found out that what they were asking for was approved, and other barriers that, you know, have been identified. We've been Johnny-on-the-spot, you know, going after it. We are, the, the communication is going well, we, it's one of those where we tell them, we don't want to bother you, but we want to make sure that you know we're here. So, we're gonna touch base with you periodically and make sure, but know if you reach out, you know, we're, we're right there for you, and we will be giving you a call unless you tell us that we'll, don't call us, we'll call you. So, but that, it's, even those who initially were the don't call us, we'll call you, when they found that some of the things that we were bringing were just additional resources and, and information, you know, they, they got to be okay with the communication also. But then ensuring that we provide the technical assistance at every step as we go along. And that's one of the things that causes our team to get up in the morning and get excited about, you know, what they're doing. I know one of the, the team members that we have are, are new members, she had worked in an area where she didn't work directly in the field. And she came and told me, this is so exciting, I get to get out there, and I'm really there. And that's, that's the way everybody feels, and, you know, of our team. And then, I think the districts feel it, and they know that that's the way we feel. So, you know, again, we're really excited, we're really pleased, we're looking forward to where we're going, and we just, we just have such high expectation. You see, I'm doing my hands, because I just, I can't wait. But we are, we're just, you know, knowing that there are things we're, we're working through, but what the districts are also saying, we're not working through it here and there, there, we're working through it together. So, that's, that's my little update. Are there any questions?
Based on, I don't know if you were here the morning session, but the importance of mentorships.
Yes.
Can they use some of this funding, partnership district fund?
Yes, yes.
Can they say, we're gonna use this to establish a mentoring program? Because as I recall seeing some of the schools and visiting, they were on the closed list, I, I think they might be on this list as well, a lot of teacher turnover, it seemed like, and it was partly systemic because of what the state did to them. Not, you know, good teachers may not want to be at an F school, that the state sent them that school, it was probably a fine school in many ways, but the state laid with some kind of a, not F, but, you know, they were gonna close it down, and so no teacher wants to... So, you know, I think it was, it wasn't necessarily the school's fault, but nonetheless, there's a lot of turnover. And so, mentoring seems like that would be a huge issue.
That would be an eligible expenditure, yes. It, absolutely. Yes.
One of the other discussions, and I think that you were here, that we had was about the parent dashboard.
Yes.
And so, looking at ways to make sure that the partnership districts are, are presenting that to parents and, and able to, parents, grandparents, guardians.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because as I, I was listening this morning, I want to say, ooh, ooh, me, me, me. One of the, when the dashboard was out, two things. One, during the networking session, we sent the link to all of the superintendents and those in attendance, and just so that they had the link, that it also had the place where they could run off the, the actual form. But then, we were at a number, which, it was just like, oh, divine intervention, we were at a number of our technical assistance site visits at parent-teacher conference time. And we sent the link to the principals and at the meeting, and we told them, you know, here are some of the different ways you can use it. So, so in some of those districts where we were, recognizing that we often miss some of the, those that we are trying the most to get to, and we talked about that at the networking session. So, we encouraged everybody there. So, it was the current, as I said, the current representative, the current districts, as well as four of the newly identified. So, before they left, they had the link, they had the information, and we got a chance to talk about it, and talk about the importance. But then again, like I said, when we were there during parent-teacher conference time, that were, those were immediate things that this day, while the parents are here, we're gonna talk about. So, yes, that is one of those things, whenever anything comes up that needs parental participation or input, we've identified this team, this body, as a group that we will go to, and however we need to do it, we'll make it happen, and we started already.
Good, so it'll be good to hear their input.
Yes.
The number, you know, the partnership districts are mostly...
Yes, they are.
Minority, you're African-American district, so it'd be good to get that feedback.
And like I said, and we sent it not only to the superintendents, but we always ask them, who else would you like to have us send things to? Because, you know, when you're the superintendent, you get a whole lot of stuff. So, we sent it to the superintendents, but then anyone else that they identify.
Yeah, and, and you saying that raises that question of innovation, because the superintendent may not be...
Right, right.
Let me say, they might not have the ability to be, be as innovative in thinking through some of those solutions.
Right.
So, that was another, you know, thought, as far as, you know, how to engage in innovation, making sure.
Yes.
I'm sorry if I missed this earlier, but about roughly how much is in the partnership district fund?
Six million.
Okay.
Yeah, Richard.
Yes.
I just want to say that your presentation was very, very informative, we're on the right track, it sounds like a top ten in ten.
Yes.
Partnerships, ESA, everything is gelling together, and that is great. I want to be a teacher again.
All right. And see, if we can impact these...
I'll teach all the time.
And that's accurate. If we can impact these districts, we can't help but catapult to the top.
Any other questions?
You, you know, one thing that came to my mind, how we have been having different school districts present to us what's happening with different topics, I would like to hear some of the, these partnerships that have already mated, like East Kentwood, others, to come in and tell us their story, and how, what the department has done to help them has been successful. So, that can be possible, that, that would be great.
And I know they would be excited.
Deputy Superintendent Alice, the proper one to ask to follow through on that?
We absolutely will follow through on it.
Very good, thank you. If there are no other questions for Dr. Daniels here, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda is report of the co-presidents. I'll simply observe, I continue to follow work of Dr. Vidi in Detroit Public Schools. You know, when you are a school administrator, you often have to take the blame for what someone else did or didn't do that you didn't know about, and I guess there was that A through F system that was part of the Detroit settlement, which was actually, actually the responsibility of the School Reformed Office, which got moved to, from the, from the Treasury, I guess, back to education, and promptly renamed, and its mission changed. And so, that was clearly not Dr. Vidi's responsibility. I, I continue to be impressed with his thinking about the mission of Detroit Public Schools and hoping for his success, and a key part of that is the support from his board and from, from all of us here in the constructive direction that he is leading that district. So, just wanted to share that. All right. Then, next we have the report of the superintendent, who is not here, but I have notes here that he would have shared with you, the ESA Plan update, that the United States Department of Education approved Michigan's plan for the Every Student Succeeds Act. And again, we thank the hundreds of stakeholders who helped develop the plan, and the MDE staff who worked tirelessly to compile all the information. So, our, our thanks to you and the department for their work on, on this and this milestone. He also wanted to recognize Pam Pugh, appointed to the Flint Water Interagency Coordinating Committee. Congratulations to you. Governor Snyder appointed you to the Flint Water Interagency Coordinating Committee, and your strong public health, environmental health background will be a great asset to that committee, as it has been to our board in the last couple of years.
Congratulations.
This brings us to the report of the Michigan Teacher of the Year, Luke Wilcox, the 2017, 2018 Teacher of the Year, will provide a report.
So, one of the, the most amazing parts of this whole Michigan Teacher of the Year, year for me, has been the fact that I've been so narrowly focused, committed to my district, that I've spent the last sixteen years in, in Kentwood and thinking about Kentwood. And this year has given me the opportunity to get outside of Kentwood and to see what education looks like in a lot of different places in the state of Michigan. And even recently, you know, last week, on Monday, I was... And even recently, you know, last week, on Monday, I was in Bloomfield Hills and Royal Oak. And then on Tuesday, I was in Detroit Public Schools, got a chance to visit several schools in, in Detroit Public Schools. And I've been all over the state, Lansing, Kalamazoo, up north. And it's been, it's been eye-opening for me to see what other schools and other school districts look like. And I think the thing that has been most striking to me is the huge variability in quality of schools and resources available to schools as I go from one place to another place. Where like, on Monday, I'm in Bloomfield Hills, and I've got high-level teachers, engaged students, all the right resources, beautiful building. And then on Tuesday, I'm in Detroit Public Schools, at a high school where the ceiling tiles are falling in, there's trash everywhere, and it's, I mean, like, from, from one place to the other. It's, it's, it's amazing to me to see the variability from, from one place to the next. And so, you know, obviously, I, I start to think about that, and I, I want, I want to think about, like, who's the winners and losers in this scenario? And I have my ideas about it because of the certain places that I've gone, but I realize that, like, I've only been to certain schools and I haven't been to every school, and it's hard to generalize from just a couple of different experiences. And so, being a math teacher and a statistics teacher especially, I look to the statistics to tell me more of the story, right? Because if I can get some statistics about the state of Michigan as a whole, I feel like that can inform me about some of, some of what I'm actually seeing in person when I visit all of these schools. And so, I've just compiled some, some data here that I'm going to share with you. And it's not necessarily like a, a full story yet, it's just a few of the data points. I have several different data points that I'll share with you. And then at the end of it, I'll, I'll give you just a, a couple of ideas that I have about how we like move forward with, with, with our thinking on, on some of this stuff here. So, if I, let's see, what do I do here? I'm a, I'm a Mac guy, so slideshow from the beginning. Here we go. Okay. So, I have a scatter plot prepared for you here, and I've only provided you with one of the variables there on the Y-axis. I will tell you that each one of the dots represents a different high school in the state of Michigan. And what I did was I just took a random sample of 11 high schools. And so, you'll see 11 dots there, and on the Y-axis, you have the average math SAT score for that school. So, you can see that the, the average math SAT score ranges from a low of 400 to a high of 600, which is a huge, huge difference. And this is the average for a high school. Now, I haven't provided the variable on the X-axis for you. And I actually put this in front of a few colleagues, and I said, "Could you guess what the, what the variable is that we're measuring?" And somebody guessed that it was class size. And I said, "Well, we've got 80s and 90s over there. I hope that we don't have class sizes of 80 or 90." But that's not the reality. The reality is that it's percent free and reduced lunch. Okay? And this, this is disturbing to me. I'm a statistics teacher, and in my AP Stats class, we would say that there is a strong negative linear relationship between the percent free and reduced lunch and the average math SAT. In fact, like, that's a, that's so closely linear that, for the most part, you could tell me the percent free and reduced lunch for your high school, and I could tell you what your average SAT score is going to be. And, and that's not right. A, a, a student's socioeconomic status should not determine what their math SAT score is going to be. And so, I, I find this a little bit disturbing. So, now I want to dig in further, right? Like, let's look at this percent free and reduced lunch, and like, who, who are these students, right? So, I did some more research. And I've got some other statistics to share with you. Eleven, about 12% of Caucasian households in the state of Michigan are below the poverty line. And then I even wanted to get in a little bit more detail. I look at, at my city of Grand Rapids, the average income for those households is about $57,000. Okay? Now, let's compare that to the African-American households, where 31% are below the poverty line, almost three times the poverty rate for African-American households. And then specifically in my town of Grand Rapids, the average income is $25,000, less than half of the average income for a Caucasian household. And so, if I go back to this here, and I leave off the variable on the X-axis, we've already decided that that's percent free and reduced lunch. But the reality of that is, I could almost equally label that as a percent African-American because of the disproportionate number of African-Americans that are free and reduced lunch compared to Caucasians. And this is even more disturbing. This is equally as disturbing as the free and reduced lunch kids, as the percent African-Americans, is that you could tell me the percent African-Americans in your high school, and I could tell you what the average math SAT score is. To me, that's, that's upsetting. So, a couple of other stats to share with you. East Kentwood High School, my high school in Kentwood, last year, we had 10 minority students pass the AP Statistics exam. So, when I say minority there, this is African-American or Hispanic. 10, 10 who passed the AP Statistics exam. East Kentwood High School is a high school of 2,800 students. We graduate 600 to 700 students each year. Of those 600 students that graduate, about half of them are minorities, 300. We have 300 seniors that are graduating each year. And in my AP Statistics class, I can claim that 10 of them passed the AP Statistics exam, out of 300. That's abysmal. That's, that's, that's not something that I'm proud of. There's, there should be more minority students passing AP Statistics at East Kentwood High School, right? Because of the, the number of minority students that we have at our school. Worse than that is that East Kentwood High School was number one in the state. We were the best high school in the state for number of minority students that passed the AP Statistics exam. The second-place school had seven. That's, that's disturbing to me. A couple more stats here. African-Americans comprise 14% of our population in the state of Michigan, but 49% of the jail population in the state of Michigan. That is what it is. The U.S. Department of Education found that African-American students are three and a half times more likely than Caucasian students to be suspended or expelled. And there's been a lot of research that's been done to show that there is a direct connection between those students who are disciplined in schools and those student, those people that end up in, in prison. So, to the MDE's credit, the MDE recently has composed this list of the school districts that are currently disproportionately suspending or expelling minority students, which includes Airport Community and Our Republic, Bering Springs, Chippewa Valley, Dearborn City, Forest Hills, Gross Point, Harper Creek, Kelloggsville, Mount Clemens, Northwest, and Troy School And so, some of these statistics that I've shared are disturbing. So, so we need to start to think about solutions. What's next? What can we do with this information? And I, I think the first thing is that we have to acknowledge that this is, this is true. This is not just something I'm feeling when I go to different schools around the state. This is something that is clearly supported by the data. And so, for us to first acknowledge that this problem exists and that this is a problem, I think is important. And we need to better inform ourselves, and I need to better inform myself. So, my suggestions to you, there is a book that just came out called The New Jim Crow. And there's also a Netflix documentary that just came out that I saw on this last week called Thirteenth. And I, I think that this is a, a start to the conversation. And then, moving forward as a school board, I think that we have to be hyper-aware that the decisions that we make at this table affect free and reduced lunch kids, African-American kids, Hispanic kids, the, the, those, because of this, this, this issue that exists, we need to be aware of that as we make decisions here as a board, because our decisions affect the, these students. And sometimes, it's, it's certainly not that we're intentionally creating this data that exists, but we have to be aware of it, and we have to think harder about how our decisions are impacting those particular students. Thanks.
Thought-provoking to the point of silence.
Yeah. I mean, it's always, it's something that you know is, is happening and, and, you know, but every time you see it in black and white on a screen, it just, you know, jumps out. I, I still remember the, we had a presentation on student achievement, and the third-grade student achievement numbers, you could see the, the differences between those who are considered economically disadvantaged and those who were, were not. But the one thing that always struck out to me with that was the number of students in each category, where the number of students who were considered economically disadvantaged outweighed, was greater than the number of students in Michigan who were considered not economically disadvantaged. And I, I actually just watched a documentary yesterday. In, in it, someone from the school reform movement made the comment, "Poverty is not an excuse." And it just, you know, it, you kind of like get chills when you hear that, because it may not be an excuse, but it sure is a reality. And it's clear as day that it has, it has an impact. So, thank you for, for taking a look at that and, and sharing that. And that's a pretty eye-opening.
I would just say, Luke, that the more I on the SAT, I think things are changing so much in this world, the creativity, and I think that that may not be as important. And, you know, I, I think that, that doesn't mean it used to. And I think it, it, in many ways it does, if you have a high SAT score, whatever, a more likelihood for success. But I think that's going away. I think it's, opportunities are, for creativity and for the jobs of the future, Cuban says that a lot of these STEM, he says those aren't, those are going to be done by artificial intelligence, they're not going to be, the big ones are going to be the creativity that I think the kids on all those scales could do just as well if we don't kill that creativity. That's my whole focus, so it's, you know, I, I think that, yeah, things are changing. And I think that could provide, provide opportunities to people that traditionally we would just say, "Well, that's just the way it seems, and we can do everything we can." But I think that there's going to be tremendous opportunity on all those scale things in the going, going forward.
And I totally agree with you on the Lou Glaser and you and the creativity and the whole child, like, that is exactly where I am right now. And I, I think that we're forward-thinking on that, and I don't think that in general, our educational system is, is there yet. They're not forward-thinking on that because there's so much importance placed on SAT math. Our whole system is built around the SAT math score. You can't make it into college, you can't access certain things. And so, sometimes we have the opportunity to make decisions about what, what is a priority. And like, so you challenge when we overemphasize standardized tests. And I appreciate that, because we, we have to pull that out of the culture. Like, the current culture is that, like, the SAT math is your life, like, you can't do anything without it. And, and we need, we need to, we need to change that, right? So, we need to challenge that idea. And, and not everyone is there. I mean, I, I feel it. I teach high school. You know what I feel? I feel produce, produce SAT scores. That's what I feel, even though that's not how I think.
Right.
You know? And my colleagues feel that, too. So, we need to change that so that teachers don't feel that.
And I think, you know, tying back into the conversation that we had earlier today when we look at those incarceration rates, and looking at, you know, where, where does that begin? Or how can we provide some interventions and thinking about the different ways that we can intervene? You know, whether it's looking at the school environments, as well as, you know, some of the things that we're talking about changing here.
Well, for many schools, it's the class size, and I'm going to repeat that 110 times, because when you have a class of 40 students, and in that 40 students, you have students that just came into the system, they had never been in school before, but they're 13, 14. And then you have the bilingual students, and then you have the regular ed students. So, that's a big problem. We're never going to, those schools probably will be at the bottom 3% forever and ever because it's the composition of classrooms. And so, another big problem is teachers. We don't have the teachers to teach these children. So, a lot of times, the classrooms are, rise up to the number of 40 because they divide the kids that don't have a teacher into the other rooms, and then they become 40 students. So, you know, it's, if you've been in, in front of students, it's very difficult to, to lead that orchestra and be a constructive, be a constructive day. So, that's all the things that we should be looking at. What is happening out there that is, is not meeting all the needs of a student, class size is a big one.
Any other questions for Luke?
Thank you.
The next item on today's agenda is approval of the Model Code of Student Conduct. The 2014 Model Code of Student Conduct has been updated to reflect recent changes in legislation that went into effect in August of 2017. Presentation of the board occurred at the June 13, 2017 meeting, followed by a period of public comment. Congratulations to Amy Allenese, who was recently promoted to the Supervisor of School Health and Safety Programs. And now, the next steps, approval for the Model Code of Student Conduct is being requested at today's meeting. Mr. Kyle Garant and Mrs. Amy Allenese will present.
So, I'll let Amy chime in here in a second with some of the specific changes based on the last board meeting. As you know, we brought this to you earlier this year. We made changes based on the board conversation. One of the biggest concerns was the model nondiscrimination policy. That was one of the addendums to the policy, the revised Model Code. So, we, we've removed that piece. There were two other pieces that came up in part of the conversation, and then over the lunch period today, I had a conversation with Tom about some of, some of his thoughts on wording and just questions in general. So, I don't know if Tom, if you want to walk through those, or if we, if there's other questions or comments, we sent the policy out.
Should we, I'm sorry, should we do a motion first?
Motion to approve, it's on the table.
Yeah, and then discussion. I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Discussion.
So, on page five, there, we're crossing out talked about maybe at least the opportunity.
Yes, we can change it to that. Yep, we can do that.
If I may weigh in here, traditionally, that has been seen as part of due process. How, how does that figure into the?
Well, that's what this portion is.
It falls under due process.
It is under due process, and so, I think that they took some things out with this. We're not operating under, we're not operating in court, but law.
Yes, and this came from true-in-law firms stating that the, the students don't legally have that right, so the opportunity would be.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
On page seven, I have
Yeah, I mean, I think what we could do is just say that, and that's chicken language, except when a student's misconduct requires legal action, the school district will work to protect the due process, will work to protect students' due process, explaining what the student is accused of and giving him or her the opportunity to, and then just continue on from there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. On page eight, prior to the year, oh, yeah, okay, because I saw this, kind of like the fourth paragraph, prior to the year, parent guardian will be I brought that up, coming some kind of reasonable, I forget, a reasonable opportunity and amount of time.
Yeah.
I think we were going to add that, prior to the year, the student and parent guardian will have a reasonable amount of time to review on that.
Well, maybe it should be more specific. Well, maybe it should be more specific as to reasonable. What's reasonable? Two hours, one hour, one day, two days?
I guess if it was two pages, it would be an hour. If it was 500, it might be five days. So, I guess.
I guess it's up to the school district to decide what's the appropriate time.
But at least there's an acknowledgement that there is something reasonable. They got, can't just give it to them a minute before walking in. I guess those were the only ones. We can go briefly over a couple of others, but I mean, I understand what you were saying. So, I don't, we don't need to.
Okay.
I just, very quickly, on page 13, there's a typo. The word "school" has an extra C in it. In a weapon-free school zone.
All right, I got you, yep.
So, I am.
Okay, in this area of, and I think this is where the Model Code for Students Kindergarten Through Age 18 is problematic. Due process, I'm at the Due Process Procedures, pages five and the following. That, I think due process for a six-year-old looks mighty different than a due process for a 17-year-old. And I'm maybe, and it's obviously too late to revise this document, but maybe when we come around again, we should think about model policy for elementary, middle, and high school or something of that nature. I've got, and I'm sure that there are legal ramifications to being age six versus age 17 as well that would play into our policy development.
No, are these guidelines or it's a policy? What is it?
It's a model policy. So, they can choose, yes. So, it's a, the schools can choose to adopt it if they wish as their policy, or they can draw sections from it and create their own like any other policy.
Because as I'm sitting here, having been a principal, we take into account the age of the student and how we remedy the situation. So, I'm going to leave that to the school district to conduct the process that is going to be adequate, appropriate for the age level.
And just as a reminder, I'm sorry, I didn't get it. Sorry.
No, go ahead.
I just say as a reminder, the reason that we revised the model code from what it was before was because of law changes that eliminated zero tolerance policies.
Right, right, right.
So, that was our main objective, was to get that out of the existing code. So, that way, the board code would reflect our current law.
Yeah, so this model policy, see, I don't like the word "policy" if they're going to be able to choose if they want to use it or not.
The title says Model Code of Student Conduct. So, I don't think it says policy in it.
So, they can adapt it into their policies or they can use it in their handbook, however they see fit.
Like, we've done other, LGBTQ and all of those models, right?
Yeah, that was more guidance, whereas this could be used in place of an actual policy. That was more of a guidance document.
Whatever process they have in place, they can incorporate some of these ideas into that. Okay, to comply with the changes of law. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. And Eileen is she?
Eileen?
But she, you cannot vote through the phone.
Huh?
You cannot vote through the phone.
You can vote. You're just not part of a quorum.
Right.
Well, that's not what I understood, the people that came to speak to us at that meeting from the Attorney General's Office. They said that we couldn't vote by phone.
That was my understanding.
No one's on the phone anyway, so maybe it doesn't.
I think that should be cleared.
Okay.
That we can vote by phone.
There's one item, and I know that this is something that I hope maybe is a topic in the future, but on page, there's just a set of standards just on the top. But there's an organization as a formal idea. And I've had people that are very concerned about this organization, this idea, they're promoting and evaluating students and whether this person is likely to steal as part of the social emotional learning. All kinds of content. We're talking about feelings and it just gets very subjective. And so, the only thing that I would say third bullet, I can vote yes on the fourth, on Roman numeral four. There's a, you know, and you guys can
I don't want to take it out.
Why is, can I ask the, what is this list? Is this just resources or is it things that have actually?
Yes, they are just resources. And then also, it's, you know, if school districts are interested in developing a school-wide approach to behavior and discipline, this is the list of resources that can help them in making that decision.
Yes, collaborative.
Okay, okay.
It's, you know, Tennessee controversy. It's a, it is not just a simple, and maybe I'm fine with it, but I just will have to wait till January.
I really believe.
What page are you?
The Roman numeral four, so at the very beginning.
I think that we should include as many ideas as we can. Everybody has a different view of seeing all these documents that are being recommended. I don't, I don't see any problem with that document being in there. I don't think we should zero it down just to one thinking. I think we should have many different perspectives in what the
Because then you're getting into, should we have bad thing that
It's not a bad thing.
Well, no, I'm just saying.
It's a thing. It's not a bad thing.
There's a lot of controversy.
Why did you select this?
It was in the previous one. And so, I was not personally the one who put it in there, but it is around social emotional learning and has some collaborative learning for the academic piece as well. So, but it is geared towards the social emotional learning. And so, that was always a resource in when dealing with disciplinary actions.
I'm not familiar with the controversial pieces that Tom is referring to, but the former and current U.S. Department of Ed uses them to provide TA to states on these issues, too. So, I guess I would just say that there, this group is being used in multiple versions, including by the U.S. Department of Ed, to provide states and locals with resources that want help in addressing their school climate.
At least one state recently said it's harmful enough to where they withdrew from this organization.
I don't know. You could be a member of the organization.
No, they had an effort, there was 10 states and they, there was quite a bit of debate and they said this is, was this is a, not a good organization. Again, if we could put it off to January and so that I could, you know, I
You could move to strike that particular item, I suppose.
So, let me just, let me be clear, though. You're not opposed to discussing social, providing some tools for social and emotional health and wellbeing. Yours is the actual organization.
But also the whole theory, I mean, what it is. It's very undefined. And so, there are things that it's getting, there's a lot of concern about student privacy, about, you know, finding out things about kids' feelings and their likelihood to steal and their likelihood to do this and their, it's just stuff that schools shouldn't, it's all kinds of issues with it.
If you look at that guide, there's no, there's none of the discussion about the pieces that you're talking about. It's more focused on how teachers can create environments, not only in their classroom or the school, that are socially emotionally friendly, that take into account people's learning styles and also help provide behavioral support services to kids that need it. So.
I don't
I'll make a motion to strike the third bullet point on Roman numeral four page.
I'll support. A discussion on the amendment?
I guess I don't know enough either way to, I mean, I don't feel so strongly about it. So, I'm trying to Google what you're talking about to figure out what the controversy might be.
Yeah, because if we're talking about the whole concept of social and emotional learning, that's one thing. But if you're talking about the resource that has been listed here, that's another thing. So, I'm, I'm not clear there.
Well, I, what I seconded was eliminating the one resource.
Right. I mean, it doesn't mean that they can't. Unless we come up with some other ones that we could put that would counter that, then I would feel more comfortable with the resources. Being one-sided, I just
So, it looks like what I'm seeing here, that the controversy is around the actual testing, right?
This organization promotes.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I looked on their thing and I didn't see anything about testing on their thing. I'm just looking at a New York Times or NEA Today article from the, I think the New York Times.
So, it's like assessment tools?
Yeah.
Yeah, just things
So, the Tennessee legislature introduced a bill that would prohibit the state board from adopting or providing standards and competencies around social emotional learning. Apparently, it was sparked by the fact that Tennessee participated in a pilot project through Castle. But it wasn't, the controversy wasn't around the organization. The controversy was around whether or not social emotional learning should be taught in Tennessee schools and not through the Tennessee legislature stepped in. So, I think there's some distinction there, but
And that, right, that's what I was trying to get to. Now, yeah, if we're talking about striking social and emotional learning, that's a huge issue.
Bigger discussion, right. I recognize that. But in I just, when we're providing resources, like I said, if it was balanced and it had an organization that could provide concern as a resource, I would be more inclined to say that's okay. But the fact that it's
Okay, the amendment is before you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Amendment fails. Okay, we're back to the handbook itself. Any other discussion on the handbook or modification? Not the handbook, the Model Code of Student Conduct.
And then, the original issues that we have, those are all addressed.
Yep.
Okay, so let me just ask this. If we bring this back next month, are you going to come up with new things that you're not happy with?
No, but I mean, you'll probably have a good vote because if that's still in there, I'll still
Yeah. But I'm just saying, you know, the department keeps coming, bringing this back and addressing our concerns and then we bring more concerns. So, at some point, we need to like
Right.
Stop and just vote.
Is there any more discussion? Then we come to a vote. All in favor of the Model Code of Student Conduct, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It sounds like we have three in favor, one opposed, and one abstention.
You abstain?
Yes, I didn't vote on that. And what, five votes were actually needed for adoption here? Anyone want to reconsider that vote? Okay, very good. We move on. All right, the next item on today's agenda is state and federal legislative update. Marty Ackley, Director of Public and Government Affairs, will provide an update on state and federal legislative issues.
Good afternoon. This is the last week of session before the holiday break. And so, the legislature is moving some bills through committee, through their committees. This morning, the House Workforce and Tell Development Committee moved five bills that are part of the Michigan Pathway, Career Pathway Alliance package to extend the opportunity for CTE programs throughout the state. So, those have passed out of the committee and now go to the floor in the House. Also, this morning, or I guess later in the morning, the Senate Health Policy Committee passed out of the committee two bills that deal with prescription drug and opioid abuse, dealing with, including it in curriculums and creating a commission to require recommendations for instruction of pupils on prescription opioid drug abuse. So, those have also been reported out of committee and go to the Senate floor. There's a Senate Education Committee today, taking up two bills. One bill would exclude law enforcement officers from the recently passed restraint and seclusion definition by school personnel. So, it would exclude law enforcement officers from that law. And then also, Senate Bill 702, called the Educational Instruction Access Act, to clarify deed restriction language. So, that's being taken up in the Senate Education Committee today. The State Board Legislative Committee met on the 30th of November. There were two bills basically that were discussed, that were also discussed at the last, at the November board meeting, Senate Bill 487 and Senate Bill 646, dealing with the possession of concealed weapons in previously prohibited areas like schools and bars and childcare centers. And so, Eileen is not on the phone, from what I understand. So, if a member of that committee would like to discuss that or at whatever pleasure it is for the committee members.
Member of the Legislative Committee wish to report?
Well, I can report what we did that afternoon. Was it in the afternoon or in the morning? Well, whenever, whenever we met. And we discussed, well, we discussed a mascot legislation that is being considered. And there's two different bills. And so, but those bills were stale right now.
Right.
They weren't getting anywhere. But if you read the language in the bills, I think the group that doesn't want mascots would be pleased with the language anyway. But they're not going anywhere at this point.
And one of the thoughts that we were discussing is what position does the Civil Rights Commission have? Has there been a position? And I'm not sure if we were going to get direction on that from you or not. So, well, we'll continue that discussion.
Okay, we'll find that out.
Okay.
Yes, what, yeah, okay. So, but the fact of the matter is that the bills are not going anywhere at this point. And then, the other issue was guns in schools and in all these other places. And so, we asked, at the last meeting, we asked Marty to draft something for us with our recommendations. And so, we came up with a statement that was introduced at that meeting. And then, Eileen and Nikki introduced another statement. So, we asked Marty to look into the two statements and see how many of the parts in each statement, all of us that were on the each statement, all of us that were on the committee could say, that's okay, you know, we're in some kind of agreement. And so, do you want to read those, Marty?
Yeah, if I can find them.
Okay, so, so after that, we, see, we can come to a conclusion as to, to how we can make a statement. My recommendation is that, as, as a board, because it's such a divisive, that I don't think we're gonna come to any conclusion between the, the Rs and the Ds in this statement, maybe we shouldn't work at, with it as a, as a group, because we're not gonna come to any consensus. But we can still go ahead and read what we agreed upon. The, Eileen is not in the, and the, and Nikki is not here either. So, anyway, Marty, did you find them?
Yes. So the, the position statement that Eileen and Nikki had prepared was presented, like Lupe said, and then also the position statement B, which was shorter, and so there were sections of each of those statements that were discussed, and then kind of a little whip count was made through the discussion. And so what I was asked to do is take those different sections of each statement, and kind of give a report as to how many opposed and how many supported. So to take Eileen's position statement, Eileen and Nikki's position statement first, the first segment said, "The State Board of Education recognizes that the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution reads, 'A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state; the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed,' end quote. In light of current bills being considered in the Senate and conserva, and conversation related to the rights of adult citizens, the State Board is invested in the safety of our youth and Michigan students." So that section was supported by two of the members of the committee, and opposed by two. Then there was additional language added, that was offered, that said, "While the State Board of Education has no role in the U.S. Constitution, legal tradition says that any law must be in accordance with the U.S. Constitution." Two members supported that, one was opposed, and one possibly could. And then there was another whole section that said, "Through, or though these bills clarify Michigan citizens' gun rights and responsibilities and attempt to reduce the increasing number of irrational, senseless attacks on children and school staff across the nation, further discussion is necessary to reduce the confusion about the best approach in providing safety for Michigan students and responsibility of local school districts. Every school should be a safe haven for learning. The State Board of Education condemns all violence against innocent children and the dedicated staff who work to teach and prepare them for life. There are factors, external to the State Board, that need to be addressed, that will decrease the risk of violence in schools, including improving the delivery of mental health care, and addressing the current effectiveness of background checks in the purchase of firearms. The conversation is broad, and will require a dedicated commitment and further action at all levels." The following, and so, that part, two support, and two possibly could support it. And then there's a list, the following is our commitment to this conversation. "The State Board recommends that local schools adopt one or all the following guiding principles to ensure student safety. The first one, implement lockdown active shooter drills with survival tactics that have been shown to work. The Michigan Department of Education will be a resource to providing EBP, and developmentally appropriate drills, when a school district seeks guidance and implementation." Two members supported that section, and two were unsure. The second was, "Implement and carry out a see or hear then tell campaign, where students and staff are encouraged to proactively respond to isolated and patterned behavior and threats with seriousness." Of that, three were in support, and one was uncertain. The third piece was, "Through current bills, though current bills allow a potential deterrent, on any school or campus, attackers may face trained armed personnel or volunteers who are prepared to defend children against assailants. The State Board recommends that where and when appropriate, schools employ trained safety officers to work within the school." Two support that section, two oppose it. And then there was a section at the bottom that said, "The State Board acknowledges the above recommendations are part of the solution to a deeply troubling problem of violence in schools, and is committed to the ongoing conversation and healing of our local communities. No temperature was taken on that section, although Nikki offered additional language along the lines of, 'Local districts should have the right to determine the possession of weapons on their campuses.'" So that kind of runs down the, the discussion on that first statement. The second position statement starts out, "The State Board of Education is committed to the safety of all Michigan children and those who care and educate them." All four supported that. The next section said, "With the exception of law enforcement and any school security personnel trained in the use of weapons to protect public safety, it is our firm belief that dangerous weapons, such as handguns and assault rifles, have no place in schools and childcare facilities." That section was supported by two, and opposed by two. The next part said, "Allowing weapons on school grounds only increases fear on the part of students and staff, and increases the possibility of a catastrophic incident. The same applies to childcare facilities." Two supported, one was opposed, and one was uncertain. Then the last section of the second statement said, "As such, the State Board of Education supports the elimination of the open carry loophole that currently exists in law, and believes that local school boards, college, and university boards should have the authority to govern the possession of weapons on their campuses, as should the operators of childcare facilities." No, no, just, no temperature was taken, no whip count, whip vote was taken on that section. So that summarizes the discussion that was, that took place during the Legislative Committee.
Okay, thank you. So there's no recommendation from the committee as such?
Correct.
All right, any other questions or comments on the part of the board members?
I, I, I have a question for Marty. Where are these bills now?
They're in the House, they passed the Senate, they're in the House Judiciary Committee. Like I said, there's one week left in this, in this year, that, that the legislature will be in town. There's no indication that they will move this week. So this, this calendar year, there's no indication that the bills are gonna move, so it'll be put off until when they come back in January, if they, if the Judiciary Committee in the House decides to move those bills.
Does this conclude the report of the Legislative Committee? Thank you very much. I am told that there is no consent agenda today, so we move to comments by State Board of Education members.
Well, I will just wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, wishing you and yours a very pleasant and peaceful time together, and a Happy New Year.
Thank you very much.
And that I appreciate each and every one of you, and thank you for all that you do.
Anyone else? Okay. All right, future meeting dates are printed, I think they're printed for us.
Yes.
Yes, okay. January 9th, and you'll want to make a special note of our February 13th meeting, which will be at Wayne Riza, and I presume we'll get parking directions, or whatever, when, when we get closer to that time. Very good. All right. If there are specific items that the board would like included on future agenda, meeting agendas, please let us know. We will be working in the next few weeks to finalize agenda for next month's meeting. And if there are no other items for this board, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing you next year.